I call the regular meeting of council to order at 7:05 for April 9th. We have the approval of the agenda. Mr. Sepatelli, any changes? Oh, we have two councillors online, councillor Byer and councillor Foley. Can you hear us? Councillor Foley, councillor Byer?
I can, yes.
Councillor Foley?
Yes, again.
Thank you. We have the agenda before us. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Sepatelli?
Yes, there is. Section 9.1, we'll have to delete first reading of bylaw 1968/2018, which is a zoning bylaw amendment.
Okay, so we'll be removing 9.1. I need a motion to amend the agenda as recommended. Councillor Byer, councillor Valentino, all in favor?
Aye.
It's carried. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Councillor Byer, councillor or Deputy Mayor Smoak, all in favor?
Aye.
It's carried. Sorry? Councillor Matichuk, did you vote? We'll do it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried, thank you. Just before we go into presentations, I would like to take a moment to recognize the tragedy in Humboldt on the weekend and the loss of life of 15 people related to the Humboldt Bronco hockey, junior A hockey franchise. It was a devastating accident that occurred that affected 29 people. Here in Thompson, we are well aware of highway travel and buses. We've all either ridden buses or put our kids on buses for a minimum three and a half hour trip to the power of Flynnflon or to Norway House or further south, seven and a half hours to Winnipeg and beyond. So we have all experienced what those kids were experiencing. A trip for a purpose of a playoff game with the intent of playing the Nippon Hawks in a playoff series. Unfortunately, fate intersected and there was a loss of life in tremendous amounts that was felt not only in Humboldt and Nippon but in Saskatchewan, but across Canada and across the world. So with that in mind, we at the city of Thompson, recognizing the city of Humboldt, we have lowered our flags at all our facilities and they will remain flying at half-staff for 15 days, recognizing the loss of life. In addition, we've sent a letter from the mayor's office to the mayor of, Mayor Munch of Humboldt, expressing our condolences and best prayers are with the, with the community and the organization as they move through these difficult times. In addition, it is a green day today and that's why we're wearing the green pins, ribbons on our shirts. I understand that the April 12th across Canada is being recognized as Jersey Day and people are encouraged to, to wear hockey jerseys in memory of those that have lost their lives and have been injured in this horrific accident. And, and last and more on, on the brighter side of humanity and, and what Canadians are all about and, and humans around the world. When I last checked prior to this meeting, the GoFundMe website that was set up by a local resident of Humboldt with the intent of raising a couple thousand dollars to help the, the victims has now raised, as of seven o'clock, 6.1.95 million dollars. And so if you're interested, the GoFundMe page is open. Just Google Humboldt GoFundMe page, you'll, you'll be taken to a page where you can put your donation in. Anything and all would be appreciated. And again, recognizing that this is truly a horrific accident that very easily could happen on any highway in Canada with the amount of trips, whether it be a band trip, whether it be a hockey trip, a sports trip of any kind. So we, we are all touched in Canada with this tragedy and we are all touched in Thompson because of our, our location and the amount of highway travel that we do. And so in closing, I would just like to observe a moment of silence and have everyone, everyone stand please. Thank you. Moving forward, we have a presentation from the Relay for Life organization. Please come forward to the delegation table, introduce yourselves and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Committee members of the Thompson Relay for Life that are here tonight are Coral Bennett, Cecile Martin, Arlene Katsmar, Darlene Whalen, and my name is Wally Itzen. We also have some survivors present, Alma Wilson and Bernice Spence. It is my honor to read this letter from Donna Wilson, who is the chairperson of the Thompson Relay for Life committee. Unfortunately, Donna is unable to be here this evening as she is at hospital with her husband, Brian, whose mother is dying from cancer. Cancer sucks. We've all said it. Seventeen years ago, we began the Relay for Life in Thompson. We've raised a couple of million dollars and still more and more of our loved ones are being diagnosed with cancer. When we began this relay, my family hadn't been hit by cancer. A few years into relay, my mom was diagnosed with eye cancer. As I write this letter, I sit in hospital watching my kind, sweet mother-in-law die from cancer. I'm angry. I'm sad. I'm also more determined than ever that we cannot give up this fight. Some people think all the money being spent on research is a waste. It is not. Research is our hope. Research saves lives. This year, Statistics Canada found cancer research has prevented about 180,000 deaths in Canada since 1988. We have lost too many to cancer and right now it breaks my heart to watch my mother-in-law suffer in pain and her quality of life is not really life. I am praying that she gets to rest soon. It breaks my heart to see her like this. My heart hurts to think of Trevor Lowe, Shelley Carey, Linda Graham, and so many other loved ones, friends, coworkers and neighbors that we've lost. We have all been touched and that is exactly why we have to keep going. We have to think of all the amazing survivors that will walk the track at our Thompson Relay for Life on April 28th as we cheer them on and celebrate life. Because we have relayed during the past five years, an additional 33 clinical trials were made in Manitoba, providing access to the very latest treatments and procedures for the enrolled 282 Manitoba patients. These are our neighbors and friends and when we relay, we help them all, allowing them to access leading edge cancer care, helping them to live longer. Just recently, a Canadian Cancer Society-supported clinical trial helped change the standard of care for a fast-growing brain tumor called gliobastoma. This cancer kills 77% of the time. This was the first significant change for this cancer in more than 30 years. We started a transportation service in Thompson to help patients get to and from treatments. When our neighbors and friends are forced to go to Winnipeg for treatment, this service provides them with rides so they can get to their appointments in a strange city safely and on time. Last year, the Canadian Cancer Society also helped 23 Thompson area cancer patients with nearly $21,000 of financial assistance to help defray the cost of travel and accommodations during their treatment. Within this region, over 2,000 residents utilized Cancer Society programs last year. Because Relay for Life participants right here in Thompson spoke up in 2011, the society was able to convince the government to fund cancer treatment and support drugs regardless of where they were taken. Since that time, 19,000 Manitoba families have received $104 million in drug benefits. In Thompson, 105 families have received $1,020,975 in benefits that helps keep money in families' pockets during a time that incomes are declining and costs are increasing. Most importantly, it allows cancer patients to stay at home, close to family and friends where they should be. Our Thompson Relay for Life committee is proud to say that less than 5% of funds raised at our relay goes to overhead, which is considerably less than the provincial average of 10%. Our Relay for Life is one of the very best in the country. The Canadian Cancer Society uses Thompson as a model for other communities looking to engage in the cancer fight. We have a lot to be proud of in this community and we should be particularly satisfied in the role we play in Manitoba and in Canada fighting this terrible disease. The Canadian Cancer Society provides over $40 million in research every year and provides clinical trials that help save lives to the people of Thompson. More than 2,000 people in Thompson benefit from these programs and services every year. This is local impact. Thank you for your support of the Thompson Relay for Life this year by reducing the cost of the TRCC by 50%. It means so much to families like mine who are fighting to stay positive in the face of significant challenges. This is our way of letting all cancer patients know that we are with them and we are determined to make a positive difference. This year, I hope that our mayor and council will put in a team and help with the fight. On April 28th, we will remember one of our past mayors, Bill Kamaski, and we will celebrate with survivor councillor Judy Colada. We know you all have family members and are friends that you have lost to cancer and those that are currently fighting this horrible disease. We will never give up. Donna Wilson, Thompson Relay for Life committee chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally. Questions of council? Comments?
May I make a comment?
Councillor Byer, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much for this presentation. As some of you might know, I was the careperson of the very first Relay for Life when none of us knew what we were doing and we had no idea what our expectations should be. And right from the very beginning, we raised more per capita than the city of Winnipeg did right from our first year. The other thing that we did, we were all very concerned that the money wouldn't go, that it would go to places other than research. And that first year, we got it in writing from the Canadian Cancer Society that yes, the money indeed would only, from Thompson, would only go for research. So I don't know if that still stands. We all know how personal and how emotional your life gets when you have cancer in your family. As many of you, I have lost family members and friends to cancer. As a matter of fact, it was on one year when really her life was on my birthday, which was April the 20th, that I got a phone call from my brother at Relay telling me that his cancer was terminal. So it is very, very emotional and very difficult and I want to applaud all the committee members for continuing on and doing this. I won't be able to join a city council team this year because I'm part of another team this year, but I'm sure you'll see us on the floor at some point in time. I just want to thank you for continuing on with this fight.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Deputy Mayor Smoak?
Yes, I was part, the first time I was ever in Relay for Life was my first year as councillor. I'd attended just as a visitor and that. But I helped coordinate the team that went in the first year and we will definitely try to get a team in again this year. I'll commit to that and get some names and numbers from around the table.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to close, Wally, on behalf of the council, the mayor's office. I want to show our appreciation for your work, your committee's work, the survivors' work and all of the community of Thompson. It's very evident as the statistics show in our fundraising capability in our community. We most recently showed it in the Manitoba Games, which was the standard that Relay for Life has set for all other fundraisers. And so I want to applaud you for the work that you do, the tireless hours that everyone puts in the background for this very significant and special event and very emotional event for, for many. So with that, I'd like to again, thank you for your presentation and reference to the good work that's being done by not only locally, but the research that's being done for Manitowans and Canadians and directly affecting the city of Thompson residents. So thank you once again for your presentation. Next, we're up to general inquiries. Are there any questions from the gallery? Second time? Third and final? Thank you. We'll now move on to the adoption of minutes. We have Resolution 2018-092, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by councillor Ellis. Be resolved at the minutes of the public hearing for variation order number 980-18, held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, March 26, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carried, unanimously, thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for bylaw 1963-2018, public reserve closing bylaw on March 26, 2018. Resolution 2018-093, moved by councillor Colada, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smoak. Be resolved at the minutes of the public hearing by bylaw, for bylaw 1963-2018, public reserve closing bylaw, held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, March 26, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carried, unanimously, thank you. Next, we have a regular meeting of council, March 26th. Resolution, Resolution 2018-094, moved by councillor Ellis, seconded by councillor Colada. Be resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of council, held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, March 26, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carried, unanimously, thank you. We're now moving on to committee reports and we have the public safety committee report and the public safety committee chair is councillor Judy Colada. I'll turn the floor to councillor Colada to, to present the report.
Thank you, your worship. The members of the committee are myself as chair, Mayor Dennis Fenskey, councillor Dennis Foley, city manager Gary Sepatelli, director of fire and public safety, John Masquerine, RCMP inspector Kevin Lewis, deputy fire chief Mike Borgorn, deputy chief of training and administration, Selby Brown, Paulette Simkins, Giselle Demure from the AFM, Nina Cordell and Chris Matichuk. Safe operations, residents were reminded once again that, of the unsafe conditions of the Burnwood River. And in January, it was reported that there was open water down by the power line by crazy peats. With the significant amount of snow that was received early in the season, residents were reminded to take care and caution when driving and pay extra attention at crosswalks as snow banks were high. Report of several fire hydrants covered in snow in Queens Bay area and were immediately addressed. However, it is noted, noted that although fire hydrants may be covered, the fire department has a map of all hydrant locations. With the extreme cold weather conditions, residents were continuously reminded to dress for conditions and watch out for the vulnerable individuals and pets. Cold weather policy, as of March 8, 2018, the cold weather policy was activated 41 times with a total of 153 individuals accessing the facility with a breakdown of 118 males and 35 females. Since the cold weather policy came into effect in 2013, a breakdown was provided for each year by CMHA. 2013-14 season, the total number of people accessing the facility were 760. The gender was 549 males and 211 females. The number of nights and cold weather facility was in effect was 73. The 2014 and 15 season, the total number of people accessing the facility were 59. The gender was 47 males and 12 females. The number of nights the cold weather facility was in effect was 13. And in 2015, 2016, the total number of people accessing the facility was 17 with 13 males and four females. The number of nights the cold weather facility was in effect was two. Community safety officer program, the community safety officer program operating agreement was being reviewed by the province and we're addressing two portions of the agreement, the funding portion and the expiry date as the agreement will expire in May 2018. An informational pamphlet was presented in the March 18th public safety building, public safety meeting and the pamphlet lists the acts from which the CSOs draw, draw their, their provincial authority and the limitations they carry within these acts. Mental Health Act, the Liquor and Gaming Act, the Intoxicated Persons Act, the Highway Traffic Act and the Off-Road Vehicle Act and the Child and Family Services Act. It also explained how the CSOs assist the RCMP, questions and answers relating to traffic, dealing with shoplifters, providing rides to PDAs, response times, working on statutory holidays, animal control issues and the authority to use force. Stats decreased for 2017 as the community safety officers did not have authority or their, provide, or their provincial acts, on their provincial acts, I should say, and were unable to work and conduct their regular duties from May 24th to the end of June 2017. Bylaw enforcement, in March, the city administration is currently looking at changing the building and property standards bylaw 1482-94 as it does not give the bylaw inspector to issue a common offense notice to business residents when they are not in compliance in respect to maintaining their lawns and properties. Fee and fines, there are also a number of property standards issues that are currently in the bylaw that are not addressed in the fee and fine schedule. An increase of all fees to $157 with an option of a 50% discount if paid within 14 days period. For example, overfilled garbage bins, snow and gravel placed on city property or on residential and commercial property, et cetera. As for snow on city streets, excess noise, improper posting, placement of signs, to be increased from $79 to $157. As a result, it was suggested to create two new bylaws, building safety bylaw and property standards bylaw. And that's my report.
Public Safety and Fire, anything to add? Thank you. Questions from council, anything to add or ask? Seeing none, we'll receive further information. Thank you. We're now going to correspondence. First letter of correspondence is from Tim Johnson, Friends of the Games Committee. This is, Dear Mayor Fenskey, with your support as the Friends of the Games Thompson proudly hosted the 2018 Manitoba Winter Games powered by Manitoba Hydro from March 4th to the 10th. The combined effort of the Thompson Host Society, Sport Manitoba, over 900 area volunteers and our Friends of the Games ensured that the 2018 Thompson Manitoba Games were a tremendous success. A few highlights and notable achievements include 1,400 participants from all regions across the province between the ages of 10 and 21. Thirteen independent sport organizations were represented. The Thompson Regional Community Center and UCN were the Games headquarters, as well as host for eight of the sports in phase one and two. Over 12,000 spectators watched the athletes compete, compete. Including participants, over 3,000 people were in attendance for the opening and closing ceremonies and another 8,000 views were watched via the event livestream. The Thompson Host Society raised over $328,000 through our Friends of the Games program. Further, the 2018 Thompson Manitoba Games will have a legacy for our community with many of our sport facilities having undergone major physical upgrades for the Games that will leave a lasting impact on our community. These included electronic retractable bleachers in the Gordon Beard Arena, access to portable tip and roll bleachers for the Bill Kamaski Wellness Center, upgrades of the curling club scoreboard and new equipment to maintain trails at Mystery Mountain. These upgrades will attract new and exciting programs to the area, enhancing the sporting experience in Thompson for years to come. None of this success could be impossible without the support and participation of our Friends of the Games at each level of support. On behalf of our athletes, coaches and volunteers, we thank you for your support. Sincerely, Tim Johnson, Friends of the Games Committee. Council, any questions or comments on that? Councillor Wong?
One thing I'd like to find out, when are we going to get the books, audit books? Are we have a deficit or we have money left over? And are we properly funded to all this facility to upgrade the equipment to accommodate the program? And when do we get this account finalized? I understand there might be still some bills to pay. So do we have a time or can we set a time as a councillor?
The schedule is, is set by the Manitoba Games Host Society. There's a 30 to 60 day timeframe at the conclusion of the Games for the outstanding invoices or any issues raised with bills to be paid. There is a audit and closing of the books by the Host Society. A presentation will be made to this council on the, the Games, not only financial, but overall presentation of the Games at a later date to, to this council. I can say confidently that the Games did not see a deficit. There is a surplus and that will be determined with the Host Society in regards to the capital expenditures that will be added to. The ones that are mentioned in the letter from Mr. Johnson have been bought and paid for and installed in, in the existing facilities. So all of that is done. And so there, there will be a report as, as for Sport Manitoba guidelines, that the Host Society has to submit an audited financial statement within a timeframe, which will be through a presentation to this council at a later date. Councillor Wong?
Question would be if, well, obviously there will be a surplus because otherwise they will come after to, to look for the deficit balance out. So my question is, if there's a surplus, who determine where the money going out if there's a surplus? Go back to Manitoba sport or we're going to divide half and half because we fund dollar to dollar matching fund. We passed the resolution to match that to have this event here. So I just want to understand if there's a surplus, whatever the amount is, how are we going to distribute the surplus? How are we going to use the surplus? Are we going to go back to Thompson here to let the society have it, to the nonprofit or whatever? How are we going to deal with the surplus?
As per the agreements that were signed, the Host Society will determine the disposition of the capital surplus. There was a memo sent to all local sport organizations from the Host Society asking for additional wish lists. The Host Society will review that and allocate the, the additional funds as per project merit. Mr. Sepatelli?
That the surplus would be distributed to a legacy fund that's monitored and administered by the, the Host Society.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to the letter from Mark Gono, Minister of Transport, in response to our letter of January 26, 2018. Dear Mayor, thank you for the correspondence of January 26, 2018, in which you invited me to participate in a conference call to discuss the loss of OmniTrax and the city of Thompson's concerns regarding increased heavy duty vehicle activity in the community and on surrounding highways. I note that you also wrote to my cabinet colleague, the Honorable Jim Carr, Minister of National Resources, regarding these issues. I understand that Mr. Carr was, was able to speak to you and I trust that he has given your concerns every consideration. Thank you again for writing. Yours sincerely, Mark Gono, the Honorable, Mark Gono, PCMP, Minister of Transport. We'll go to administration for any question or comment? Counsel, councillor Valentino?
In this letter, and for the public's information, we have been advocating and meeting with our fuel industry about the increased trailer and, and trucks on Highway 6 that are having to truck in the fuel because of the OmniTrax. And I would like to see us elevate this back again provincially and federally after the accident on Saturday night at, with the Humboldt Broncos is I think that one accident on the highway that truck was coming from Carrot River is one too many, whether or not it was related to the OmniTrax or not. But I want us to continue to elevate the advocacy now since there has been an accident on the highways and our tractor trailer traffic has increased greatly on Highway 6 and I think they really need to listen to us about how it could be a, an impact here.
Any, councillor Matichuk?
I disagree with that totally. If we expect to get somewhere economically in this area, we better have more traffic on the roads. That's what it's all about.
Perspective, I think we're all very much in favor of being a transportation hub in our community. We advocate transportation hubs as part of our economic development strategy. So I think the concern raised was from a safety perspective. We have raised it with Minister Gano. We have also raised it with Minister Carr and provincially with the minister responsible for highways in regards to the increased truck, truck traffic. So I think the comment was from a safety perspective. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Smoak?
Yes, it's definitely from a safety perspective. Over the course of the winter without OmniTrax, we've had a minimum of 120 to 150 extra trucks on our highways. And we stop and think that we put 28 buses of students, athletes through on the same highways over the course. I guess we could say- I guess we could say we're very lucky, like, I know the utmost care and consideration, but you know, this accident on Friday happened on relatively clear weather. Just think of the trucks that we saw in the ditch over the course of this winter and the buses that were on the highway. Definitely, we should pursue the trucking industry, the government, to make it safer. We asked a few years ago, the Chamber of Commerce lobbied for passing lanes on Number 6 Highway, and if you notice, there is passing lanes. There's two going each way between St. Laurent and Winnipeg. They never did come farther north than that for the passing lane. And now that we have all these big double long trucks coming, it is definitely a safety issue.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll forward this to administration to follow up with Minister Gano and Minister Carr and the Minister responsible for highways provincially. Thank you. Next, we have a letter from Jeff Wharton, Minister of Municipal Relations, in regard to Bill 19, the Planning Amendment Act. And we have the letter. Says, Dear Municipal Partner, I am pleased to advise that today our government introduced Bill 19, the Planning Amendment Act, improving efficiency in planning. This bill is a result of extension consultation and is intended to streamline and modernize existing planning processes. The act includes amendments that would reduce red tape by removing regulatory requirements that are overly prescriptive, outdated, or redundant, and in keeping with the principle of fair say, the intent is to enable municipalities to regulate activity in their local context in an evidence-based manner that ensures fair opportunities for expansion of industry. The proposed legislation takes a balanced approach to maintain current environmental accountability. Our other important highlights of the proposed legislation include strengthening environmental protections by introducing a technical review process for aggregate query proposals, requiring municipalities to review their livestock operation zoning bylaws within one year, introducing the option for members of the public attending public, or sorry, attending planning hearings to opt to receive notice by email, improving animal safety by enabling producers to upgrade existing facilities and clarifying this reinvestment does not require a new approval from council, clarifying the existing barns can be used while new facilities are being constructed, and increasing the minor variance threshold from 10 to 15% to expedite the zoning bylaw approval process and reduce the administrative burden on municipalities. We will be hosting three informational sessions over the next week to meet with key stakeholders, provide an overview of the Planning Amendment Act, improving efficiency in planning, and answer any questions. The dates and locations, Tuesday, March 27, 2018, the Lions Den in Dauphin, Wednesday, March 28, Agriculture Extension Center in Brandon, Thursday, March 29, Ericstale Memorial Rink. Please email the government appointment for your attendance, and appreciate our collaborative relationship with the Association of Manitoba Municipalities and its members, and we look forward to your participation. Sincerely, Honorable Jeff Wharton, Minister of Municipal Relations. Go to administration. Be referred to the Development Review Committee. Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments?
Well, just a comment.
Counsel Byer.
This is very clearly aimed more at the municipalities and agricultural areas, and the furthest north that they have any meetings is in Dauphin, so I find this disappointing, and I'm sure we'll have a good conversation about it at the DRC meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? It'll be referred to, which committee, Mr. Sepatelli? Development Review. Thank you. Next, we have a letter from Dan Smith, UCN, in regards to the UCN's primary care paramedic program. Your worship, thank you for your recent correspondence to University College of the North, UCN President and Vice Chancellor Doug Lofted, regarding UCN's primary care paramedic program announced earlier in March by the Minister of Education and Training. As I promised in my phone message, I will be providing written confirmation of the program details for your information. Your letter asked whether or not the primary care paramedic program would be available at UCN's Thompson campus. UCN is very pleased to advise that an eight-seat primary care paramedic certificate program will be offered at UCN's campus in Thompson beginning September 2018, in partnership with Red River College. As you know, UCN recently announced that a 16-seat primary care paramedic certificate program will also be offered at UCN's campus in the PA in September 2018, in partnership with Criticare EMS Manitoba. The differences in seat capacity in each location is related to the clinical capacity available to support the program. UCN believes that these two programs will help respond to identified shortfalls in paramedics in the north. UCN recognizes that our communication strategy around the two program offerings may have contributed to some confusion, and I apologize for the confusion. I hope that this letter clarifies the situation. Should you have any additional questions, please feel free to contact me directly, and he's provided his contact information. This is Dan Smith, PhD, Vice President, Academic Research, UCN. Go to administration for anything, any additions? Counsel, any questions or comments? Counsel Valantino.
Good news story that we're going to have this in Thompson, and I'm hoping that we can get this communicated, since they say it was a bit of confusion on their part for communication, so if we can ensure that, we can maybe partner with UCN to get that notice out there, because this is a good thing that we're going to have this year.
Counsel Byer.
Yes, I agree, this is good news. I would, unless City Manager already knows the answer to this question, I would like an explanation though, what they mean by the clinical capacity being greater, obviously, in the PA than here.
I'm not aware of what the difference is between Thompson and the PA.
Could we please get a, follow up and get an explanation of that? A quantifiable explanation.
Yep. Counsel Ellis.
Also pleased to see that this program's going to be available in Thompson. I'd also like to know what about the, what they mean by the clinical capacity, but I hope UCN can work so that, you know, we're able to have the same number of seats in the PA as in Thompson.
Yes, I assume it's related to the available jobs in the north, and I'm pleased to see it as well, even though.
My granddaughter graduated in 2017 from the Brandon facility. She was very close to the top of her class. She was given an accommodation by the city of Winnipeg because she saved a life, and she still hasn't been able to get a job in the north, so she's leaving later this month or early in May, because she's had several job offers in the south, so.
No comments? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to resolutions. We have a resolution to approve the payment for the invoice received from WaterX Industrial Services for repairs done to the water main station slash Nelson Road, and we have a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018081, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counsel Byer. Whereas in 2016, a new water main was installed along Station Road with substantial completion on the project being reached on November 2, 2016, with a one-year warranty. And whereas in mid-October, early November 2017, a buildup of water was observed on WaterX Industrial Services Limited property, and after investigation, it was suspected that the leak was on their service line, and they were instructed to repair the leak. And whereas when WaterX Industrial Services Limited excavated to repair the leak, it was found that the leak was not on their service line, but on the new water main. And whereas due to this situation, the city of Thompson is responsible for the costs incurred by WaterX Industrial Services Limited amounting to $23,931.80. Therefore, be resolved, the council approved the payment of the invoice received from WaterX Industrial Services Limited for the costs incurred of $23,931.80. And be it further resolved, the council direct administration to continue working with Manitoba Water Services Board to investigate the cause of the water main failure and pursue recuperating partial costs from the contractor who installed the water main. We'll go to administration for support.
Is seconded, is a Penny Byer?
Yes.
She's not even, how can she be seconded? Is there something wrong there?
Mr. Sepatelli, just wait.
Resolution was moved and seconded at the previous council meeting, and then deferred and taken off the agenda.
New resolution, so we have right to move or seconded instead of premeditate? That's my point of order, I'd like to find out. Please roll in, please.
So, at the last council meeting, this resolution was signed, moved and seconded as per our organizational bylaw and our process, and at the time of that council meeting was removed from the agenda, seeking more information for council. It is now on the agenda, duly signed by Deputy Mayor Smoak and seconded by Counsel Byer, who is attending by phone. I would look for a direction from council, whether council would like a new seconder, one of a council, of a counselor who is in the chambers. If that's the case, then we can have the resolution re-signed by a counselor in the chambers. Is that the wish of council?
That's a short transparency, I would like to see that.
Counsel Byer?
Yes, absolutely, go for it.
Counsel Foley? We may have lost Counsel Foley. For a council member in the chambers to sign as the seconder of this resolution.
The mover cannot be stayed with the same person, because supposed to be treated as a new, because that's the difference. If I move, I have right to speak twice. So you take away that opportunity for council that allowed to speak twice, or set aside under the Roberts Rule. It's a totally different thing, it's very important. Process we have to follow.
It's very important to understand the process. The mover is in the council chambers.
Write my name there to move, because Counsel Deputy Collins already put her name there, and Penny Byer put her name there. So we have no room to put our name to if I decide to move that resolution. That's my point.
Asking for opinion, I'm looking for consensus on direction.
Although I think that Counsel Wong has a valid point, that it should have been put out as a blank resolution and re-signed, but Counsel Smoak would have had the opportunity to sign it at any rate, because she's present.
Yeah.
Counsel Foley? Counsel Foley still with us?
Yeah, you're okay to.
Okay, so we have a newly moved resolution moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, and it's seconded by Counsel Valantino. And with that, I will go to administration for support.
I would like to move to refer this item, this matter, to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, since it was not yet heard there, to get some clarification on much of this.
Table?
I'm not, I'm moving to refer to a committee, which makes it debatable, as opposed to a table motion, which is non-debatable.
Process, but the move to refer is not an action that we take at this time. You either move ahead with the resolution that's duly moved and seconded, or you table it. Those are your two options. You can't refer an unvoted resolution. So, we have a discussion here, is there a willing to, a willingness to table this resolution? Not seeing that. I know it's not what you asked for, but there's the how we operate. You are asking for something outside of the rules of how we operate. So with.
The section.
He is correct on that.
City of Thompson operates under our bylaw. We use the Roberts Rules of Order as a reference. We're not governed by the Roberts Rules of Order, that's used as a reference. As the Chair, it's my prerogative to guide council through the process. So if there's a motion to table, that's acceptable, that's non-debatable.
This is all I'm going to get, motion to table.
Okay, thank you. A seconder, seconded by Counsel Wong. All in favor of motioning, of tabling this resolution? All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
It's defeated. So, we'll go to administration for the support of this resolution, the background. Mr. Sepatelli?
I'll refer to Anthony McGinnis.
We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak.
Yes, this resolution was before, it was a couple weeks on the table, although it wasn't brought before the council, we all had a copy of it. We all had time, if we had any questions concerning it, to go to administration and get it clarified. And I also believe this was, happened to be one thing that we thought it was the private owners, it turned out it wasn't. So the city, if they would have repaired it, might have saved themselves a few thousand dollars, but in the meantime, we have two small business contractors that are on the hook for 120 days for $50,000 that I really feel should be paid, and our administration is pursuing the difference at least in costs to us, so I really feel no need to hold this up at this time.
I've been in the construction industry for 45 years, and there is no way ever, on the information provided, that I would vote in favor of something like this. This is a gross, what would you even call it? It's, it's, I'm not allowed to use the word, but I would refer to competence here.
Counsel Wong.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the process procedure is followed, and make sure it's consistent. So I have a question, a few questions. So first question, my question is, Mr. Mayor, if my commercial property has a water break, a leak, can I just apply the digging permit from the city and hire a contractor to conduct the repair? Yes or no?
And I'm sure you already know the answer, that in a commercial situation, that the repair is the responsibility, once it's determined that it is the service leak and not the main, that it is the responsibility of the commercial operator to provide that repair.
Can I just go with this process? I mean, I want to call it process consistent, like I say again. So, you didn't answer my question exactly what I want to hear. So second.
First question. I answered your first question with the operational policy we have in place, and that how we deal with commercial versus residential water breaks and service versus mains. So what I've answered is the policy we have in place.
I can go ahead, hire, it's a private property, it's my commercial property, so I can hire a contractor to repair the job, right?
When that it is your responsibility as the commercial property owner, it's up to you to hire whoever you want. You can hire the city, or you can hire a private contractor.
Determine that.
Commercial property owner.
Thank you. So once, second question, once I discover the leak is from the main line, can I just continue, finish the repair and build to the city? Or I supposed to inform the city to take over the repair and pay the contractor debt I hired to do the digging?
Again, with the information provided to council in regards to this particular dig, the commercial operator was identified that the leak was a service leak, and that it was their responsibility to repair. The commercial operator hired a contractor to conduct the repair. Once that process had begun and they got to the service line, it was determined that the service line was not the actual leak, but in fact, the main was the leak. At that time, the city of Thompson was consulted and advised that the service leak that was thought to be a service leak was actually not, it was a main leak, and that the city of Thompson is responsible for that. I will go to administration for walking us through the process that followed. Anthony?
Once the contractor on site determined that it was actually a simulation, the city departments were contacted, and the city contacted immediately the Water Services Board, as well as the contractor who installed the water main. Discussions were held. At the time, we thought that it could be a warranty issue, so when we spoke with the contractor, a warranty certificate was issued by ACOM, the engineers, to the Water Services Board, and then the request was put through for the contractor who put the water main in to come to repair. They recommended that we proceed with the repair using the contractor that's on site, and that's what the city then recommended to happen.
Any other questions? Yep.
Do the city have the equipment to determine the water leak or not? I believe we do, right? Sorry?
Wrong question.
Do we have the equipment? Yes, we do, right? So that equipment is only can determine whether leaking or not, but. whether leaking or not, but cannot locate the break. Am I right?
Thank you.
Correlator, but it's not an exact science. It works on sound. And there's a variety of obstacles that can deflect the actual location of where the break may be.
Okay, so that means, okay, my other question is that did we use the equipment to determine at that time? Because the memo did explain a lot of this scenario. I understand that. So I just want to go piece by piece, step by step, to make sure the taxpayer understood the whole thing, how we conduct this. Did we use that equipment to determine whether it's leak or not? Because based on your report, you said at that time, you don't know it's a leak or not. It's just some water. Could be a condensation, up and down, whatever. Did we use the equipment or not?
My understanding is that in October, when the water was first found on the site, none of the equipment was not used because at the time, it was believed it could have been precipitation due to the freeze thaw cycle. Then when the water break was determined in November, there was no need to use the actual equipment because when they came on site, water was coming out the curb stop visually. So physically seeing the water coming out the curb stop led staff to believe that it was actually a break in the service line. Because that's normally what the water coming out the curb stop would indicate.
Also believe the city should be aware of, we just brand new renewed the water line. So what is the normal practice as administration? When you see the brand new line that have something coming out from the ground, what is the practice as administration? Do they put a claim in right away to cover the problem if at the end it determined it's a main? Or we just sit on it and assume that could be a service line or assume could be a main line? I'm talking about due diligence as administration. What kind of standard and procedure as administration to conduct this issue when it arise?
The information that's been provided to council, it was observed at the time, as Mr. McGinnis has outlined, that the water break was coming up right at the curb stop and it was physically breaking through the top soil. And so it was determined that they should investigate the curb stop. The curb stop, as you've been advised, was turned off and the water recided. It did not flow. So the assumption was that that was the break because it was controlled by a curb stop. And so that's why it was determined that there was a commercial responsibility, that it was a service break, not a main. And they pursued on that evidence.
So you just explained when the utility staff turn off the curb stop, the water stopped leaking. So we assume or it showed that that is service line, it's not the main line. So can anybody explain, how can in what circumstances that can be happen that turn out it's a main? Can some expert can explain to us? From my understanding about when you turn off the curb stop, the water stopped, that means it's a service line. When it's a service line, it's nothing to do with the city. But now the picture is very blurred to me. Why are certain become a main line? And if it's a main line, let's refer back to my second question. If I dig down to the bottom and found out it's a main line, should I inform the city and go ahead to take over the job and you guys decide who to hire? Or should I just continue to repair and send you the bill? That's why I want to understand how this process work?
So to reiterate to council again, as to part of that process, as to sort of the onsite inspections to determine actually the cause of the water break. As water was coming out the curb stop, once the curb stop was shut off, the water stopped. You have to appreciate the time of year that this happened. Obviously, the end of October, November, the ground is starting to freeze, as evidenced by a number of water breaks that we experience in our community every winter season. Water takes the easiest path to the surface. Doesn't indicate that that's wherever the water comes up, that's where your water break is. So as indicated, which has been explained by the Director of Development Services, that because of that fact, the city directed Water X to undertake the repair of their service line. Once they got down to the service line and found out that it was not their service line that was damaged, that it was a city main, City of Thompson was notified, as the Director of Development Services indicated to you just previously. And from that aspect, the city had contact with Water Services Board and the engineer on the project who had issued a warranty issue claim as that aspect. So at that point, the discussions that we had with Water Services Board was to continue with contractors on site, which the City of Thompson did.
Just a minute. Want to go to Counselor Madichuk first? Just wait, okay? He'll get back to you.
I want to add to what Duncan Wong was saying here about when he shot, when the Public Works Department shot the curb stop off and the water stopped running. It can only be one of two things. It can only be the curb stop, the valve itself, or the service line. The curb stop is not on the main. There's a section of pipe. It comes onto your property. Then there's a curb stop and then the further section of pipe, which the remainder of your service line to the house. So there's no way shutting off that curb stop can affect the main, the pressure from the main. It's constant throughout that. So why did it stop? I have questions here. That's why I tried to get this moved to Public Works and Infrastructure. We haven't had a meeting at Public Works and Infrastructure. Last one was canceled due to lack of quorum. You can't even get minutes of any meetings since the 6th of July last year, 2017, if anybody wants to have a look. We are starving for information.
Deputy Mary Smook, okay. Counselor Wong, one more question and then I'm gonna go to Counselor Clota.
Without showing the picture, without showing the picture of where the break is, without showing the invoice, why is this $23,000 or $33,000 and why is this soft dig? Okay? We just done the line, a renewed line. We didn't use a soft dig. Why are certain, there's no fiber optic line. There's no other cable on top of it. We knew, this is what we know, why we need to hire a contractor to put a soft dig machine there to ramp up the invoice. I don't even see the itemized invoice. Based on all this information, no picture, no invoice, you want me to hear and say, "Go ahead, pay out"? It's a taxpayer money. Of course, I'm gonna be upset about it.
Mr. McGinnis, you have anything to add at this point? Okay, cut. Understand, Counselor Byer, we just have a couple ahead of you.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Clota.
Yes, I'm really disappointed that there's nobody here from Public Works tonight. There's been all kinds of questions about this issue and nobody here from Public Works. And I want to apologize to Mr. McGinnis that we've been bombading you with questions when you weren't employed by the City of Thompson at that time. So really, what we should have done was tabled it or sent it to Public Works and we didn't. So I apologize.
Okay, so we have two issues here. One is an issue of the process that was followed, which yes, is a Public Works discussion. And the other one is whether we should pay our bills or not. I think we should stay focused on what the question is today, and that is, are we going to pay our bills? We ask for the work to be done and the bill should be paid. In terms of process and could things be done differently, it's too late to change that now anyways. So that conversation can still be had at Public Works. The process, the steps, whatever was taken and the actions can be looked at, evaluated, and recommendations for change, should this ever happen again, can take place then. But I really feel that the discussion this evening, first of all, I think it's well aware that we need to discuss the process and what process should be used in future, but that's fine. But I think the real question, what we should be focusing on, is are we gonna pay our bills? I say, we ask for the work to be done and we should be paying our bills. We do not want local contractors to be suffering because we're not getting our bills paid.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino?
The city, we undertook these people to do the work. They did the work. They build us. We have to pay them. We can still follow up as the recommendation from Mr. McGinnis is that we continue the follow-up. We work with ACOM and our Manitoba Water Services Board to look at how everything was done and if there's further that we can get compensation from. But we owe our contractors this money. It's at 120 days.
Counselor Madichuk.
I ask you, Mr. Mayor, who are the representatives in this circle that sit on Finance and Administration?
Is that relevant to this discussion?
It's very relevant. I want to be, how they spend their money.
It's important that we pay our bills as the City of Thompson. As Counselor Byer said, we asked for this work to be done and it was done. And I'll be supporting this as long, you know, we will be looking at, you know, ways that we can be compensated through Water Services Board and through insurance.
Deputy Mary Smook, please close the debate.
I, we did the work. We need to pay the people if we would like to talk about this further on different things. If this is the only thing that we have made a mistake on in the last year or two, I think we did pretty good if we're gone. Yes, it may cost us more money. There are things that cost a lot of businesses more money. Let's get on with it. If, Mr. Madichuk, come to the next Public Works meeting and bring your questions, have them written. And in answer to your, for minutes, we get minutes at every Public Works meeting, which you are usually at. Please take them home and read them. Thank you. Debate ended.
Thank you. With that, we'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Foley, you still with us? Counselor Foley?
Yes, I vote in favor.
Thank you. In a recorded vote, voting in favor, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Foley, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mary Smook, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counselor Clota, Counselor Wong, Counselor Madichuk. It's carried. Next, we have a resolution to approve the payment for invoice received from Eric's Plumbing and Heating Limited for repairs done to the water main on Station Nelson Road. And we're in the same situation for your signatures. So having gone through that once before, we need a new person to sign as a secondor of this resolution. I would ask someone in council chambers to sign as a secondor. Thank you. Resolution 2018082, moved by Deputy Mary Smook, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Whereas in 2016, a new water main was installed along Station Road with substantial completion on the project being reached on November 2nd, 2016, and a one-year warranty. And whereas on November 21st, 2017, after determining the water break was on the new water main, city administration contacted Water Services Board, who had discussions with the contractor regarding the water main failure, who indicated that they would not mobilize to Thompson and that the city should continue with a local contractor to repair the water break. And whereas due to the understanding that this was warranty issue, the city contracted with Eric's Plumbing and Heating Limited to repair the water main and did not tender the repair. And whereas Manitoba Water Services Board was made the determination that the warranty period expired and the city is responsible for the repair costs. And whereas due to this determination, the City of Thompson is responsible for the costs incurred by Eric's Plumbing and Heating and the amounting to $33,283.94. Therefore, be resolved, the council approved the payments of the invoice received from Eric's Plumbing and Heating for costs of $33,283.94 and be a further resolved, the council direct administration to continue working with Manitoba Water Services Board to investigate the cause of the water main failure and pursue recuperating partial costs from the contractor who installed the water main. We'll go to administration for support. Anything to add? Anthony? Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mary Smook.
The completion, in order for the work to get completed, Eric's Plumbing was already undertaken, already knew what they were doing in the hole, and it was just recommended by the Water Services Board that they continue the repair.
Move to table?
All those in favor of tabling? All those in favor of table? Sorry, seconded, seconded by Counselor Wong. All those in favor of tabling? All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Tables, moving to tables defeated. We'll go to administration already. We've done that. Counselor Smook, we've done that. Counselor Madichuk.
I'd like to remind counselors, this isn't a choice between Hellmann's and Miracle Whip. We are spending a large sum of money here without proper information.
I'd like to suggest administration type out a letter and send to all commercial property how the standard work. If you see your land have water come out, don't wait for the city to come and do the job. You go ahead, hire the contractor, dig down and find out what's the problem is. And if you find out it's a main, then you refer back to the city. That letter must be sent out to make sure nobody confused how this process work. Okay? And still no picture, no invoice, itemized invoice, how this job can be cost $33,000 and $20,000 prior to this. So I'd like to ask for the recorded vote as well.
Yes, I oppose the payment to Water X for digging on their own property, but I am going to support the payment to Eric's Plumbing and Heating because they were clearly hired by the city. And when we hire contractors, we should be paying them. So I've opposed the first payment, but I am going to vote in favor of paying this one.
Deputy Mary Smook.
For everybody's clarification too, that sounds like a lot, $50,000. Just remember that if the city would have had their own equipment and that, we would have also had a bill in excess of $30,000 to $35,000. So we're just talking about the difference between these two digs.
Any recorded vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? I am not voting. Abstentions?
I'm in favor.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed you. Okay, so it's in a recorded vote, voting in favor of Counselor Madichuk, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Foley, Counselor Clota, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mary Smook, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counselor Wong. It's carried. Next, we are in a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the 2018 Water and Sanitary Main Renewal Program. Resolution 2018095, moved by Deputy Mary Smook, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Be resolved, the council approved the recommendation of purchasing agent and award the tender for the 2018 Water and Sanitary Main Renewal Program to Accurate HD Limited for their total price of $2,074,675.54, all applicable taxes included, as per tender file number 10818. We'll go to administration for support. Anything to add?
Nothing. I'd only to say that when the tender originally came in, it was over the amount that was, that we'd budgeted. We therefore worked with the contractor to reduce the scope of work and reduce some of the costs associated with the mobilization of the population. They go underneath the budgeted amount.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mary Smook.
Okay, there's under tabulation of prices on that sheet. The recommendation tender to be awarded, limited with the bid price of $2,074,000 before taxes. That should be including taxes.
Comment? Counselor Byer? I'll be supporting this. I just want to, for the sake of my neighbors on Steakhorn Drive, just express a little bit of disappointment that for the second year in a row, Steakhorn gets sacrificed because of the tenders coming in too high. I say that with a smile on my face.
Thank you. Counselor Madichuk.
I will be voting for this also. Unfortunately though, it'd be nice if we could have extended the warranty an extra three weeks because I sure could have saved us last time around.
In the past, when there were very large projects, and this is over $2 million, and we only received one tender, quite often we re-tendered. Did that happen this time? And do we not do that anymore? Or what's the process, if you don't mind?
The, it's not a normal aspect in regards to re-tender. You're re-tendering if, depending upon what you're getting back as a proposal, whether or not that proposal meets all the requirements and stipulations that are laid out in the tender. In this case, the requirements were met. We followed- were met. We followed up with Water Services Board, who has had dealings with this company and obviously have had no issues with them and really sort of provided that reference. So, as per that conversations that we had with Water Services Board, is to bring this forth to council for approval.
Counselor Wong?
Yeah, just a lot of clarification.
So, that means there's only one, one bidder for this contract. So, and also based on the recommendation, I read the third line. He said based on, because it's over budget when they come, when their first tender is over than what we budgeted for. So, basically the administration went back to the contractor and laid out the scope of work, see whether they can adjust the price to accommodate this. Am I right?
That's correct.
So, is that a normal practice? Or is it supposed to be re-tender out, or we can do this way? That's why I want to understand the, the process. Is that how it works?
This is fairly a normal process that you have the opportunity to go to the bidder and ask them if they're willing to undertake the work with a change of scope. If they say no, then we would close and re-tender. If they're willing to entertain that, then it becomes a little bit of a negotiation.
By all question, I just want to be consistent. Thank you.
I just indicate, for constant information, last year... We had a tender for the water main renewal. There was only one proposal that was at that point as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's carried and announced. Thank you. Now, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the Burnwood Trailer Court Drainage Project 2018, and we have a tabulation of prices and a memo attached. Resolution 2018096, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Wong. Be resolved, the council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the Burnwood Trailer Court Drainage Project 2018 to Smoak Contractors Limited for their total price of $183,471.75, all applicable taxes included, as per tender file number 10518. We'll go to administration for support. Anything?
Looking further, only that we had a total budget of $275,000, $275,000, and that we're well below the budgeted amount because we don't work.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Counselor Ellis. Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Madichuk.
What exactly does this job consist of? Are they rebuilding the road or just shaping the road? Since we never had a public works meeting, I definitely have questions on this once again.
Before I go to Mr. McGinnis, this project was discussed with all of council during the budget deliberations, the scope and size of this project. Budget was discussed with council in regards to the work that was being proposed. Mr. McGinnis.
This is the second phase in the Burnwood Trailer Court, dealing with the land drainage system. It'll consist of adding new piping on the indicated areas, manholes, catch basins, and the tie-ins to the existing land drainage system.
Just to indicate as well, this was discussed at the Public Works Committee, as capital projects are on an annual basis. This was brought forth, and this with the general scope of work that is before council tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried and announced. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the lease agreements at, for 135 Campbell and a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018097, moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Smoak. Whereas on July 16th, 2012, council passed resolution number 2012178, approving the lease agreement between Alicia and Trevor Thompson and the City of Thompson for part parcel A, plan number 6161 PLTO N Division that is adjacent to their property of 135 Campbell. And whereas the property has been sold and the new owner Leonard George Brightnose is requesting to lease part, part parcel A, plan number 6161 PLTO N Division that is adjacent to his property of 135 Campbell. And therefore be resolved, the council approve the lease agreement between Leonard George Brightnose and the City of Thompson for the following property, and the City of Thompson being part parcel A, plan number 610, sorry, 6161 PLTO N Division. We'll go to administration for support. Mr. McGinnis?
This is in a sense of renewal. This has existed in the past with previous owners. But because it's a new landowner, was I thought that you brought to council just to reapprove the lease.
Go to the mover, Counselor Wong.
Exactly what I mentioned last meeting when we approved the lease for one of the commercial property in downtown. I can see, this is, that's why I like to suggest we should revisit the fees and fine. Is it totally unfair to this owner to pay .38 and he's not generating any income, and .38 in downtown for commercial purpose, probably the person that applied that we, we keep the money from renting out the, the parking spot for the tenants. So, that, like I say again, is not fair toward the price. So, we should revisit the fees and fine for that kind of charging. Thank you.
Yes, following the last meeting, I've been in contact with local municipalities. I've had responses from about two. I'm trying to compile what the costs are for these land and other communities, and I'll bring that back to DRC. We need to be shared with council.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried and announced. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the Manitoba Hydro Electric Service Agreement, Cree Road Lift Station. We have a memo from the Director of Development Services, Manitoba Hydro Electric Service Agreement and MAPS. Resolution 2018098, moved by, called, or, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Be resolved, the council approve entering into electric service agreement with Manitoba Hydro for the plant relocation slash plant alteration at Cree Road Lift Station at a cost not to exceed $34,604.85, all applicable taxes included, as per quotation number 20109564. We'll go to administration for support. Mr. McGinnis?
This is a standard electric service agreement that's required to continue to work on our new lift station for the wastewater treatment plant. It was included as part of the original package for the plant, so it's not an extra cost. The Water Services Board would be paying it out of the project fund, but because this is a city facility, the city has to enter into an agreement with Manitoba.
We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak.
Yes, since this is all part of the wastewater treatment plant, overall plan, I'm definitely in agreement with it.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution to appoint a liaison to the Thompson Hotel Association, Inc. Resolution 2018099, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Calata. Be resolved, the council appoint counselor, and we don't have a name, as liaison to the Thompson Hotel Association. My understanding is that Counselor Byer, Counselor Calata, and Counselor Madichuk have put their...
I think this time to withdraw my name, and I will be supporting one of the others.
Thank you. So, Counselor Byer, will you let your name stand?
Yes, I will.
Counselor Calata, will you let your name stand?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two for one, so that means we have a vote. Everybody should have a ballot. Those on the phone, if you could text to Gary, your vote. Counselor Byer, Counselor Foley?
I will.
Thank you.
the corner to count. I just want to clarify that.
So, understand, so that everyone understands what the secret ballot means, is that everybody's vote is protected by the voting process. The scrutineers tabulate the votes and refer the decision back to the chair, and we announce that, the result of that vote. Thank you. So, I'll reread the resolution. Resolution 2018099, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Calata. Be resolved, the council appoint Counselor Byer as liaison to the Thompson Hotel Association, Inc. Administration, anything to add?
And just in regards to the appointment of a liaison as part of the agreement that council entered into with the Thompson Hotel Association.
We'll go to the mover, Counselor Ellis.
Glad to see that Thompson...
Has come to this point. Any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carried and announced. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Sepatelli.
Motion to destroy the ballots.
Counsel Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak. All in favor? Carried. Next, we have a resolution to approve Counselor Byer's attendance at Vision Quest Conference and Trade Show. We have a memo from the executive assistant. Resolution 2018100, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Be resolved, the council approve the attendance of Counselor Byer's attendance at the Vision Quest Conference and Trade Show in Winnipeg, Manitoba on May 15th to 17th, 2018, and be further resolved, the attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Supporting documents by administration?
A memo indicating sort of the cost of travel.
Counselor Foley?
Hello?
Counselor Byer?
I'm still on the phone, but I'm hearing a busy signal from Counselor Foley.
Thank you. Just hold on for a second.
It should do.
Phone her back.
She's still there.
She's still there.
Maybe not.
Looks like we, Counselor Foley is traveling south, and we, looks like we have a phone connectivity. We will reconnect with Counselor Byer. moved and seconded. We have administration support. Counselors, or Deputy Mayor Smoak?
Yes, I actually attended Vision Quest three years ago when my granddaughter was one of the, turned out to be the recipient of $5,000. And at that time, I wondered why the city wasn't part of it with the work that we do on all the different programs and that in Thompson, and they talked about Thompson a lot. This is definitely, especially with our indigenous communities from all around us, they were all there, and it was very important, I think, that we showed them our support.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Sepatelli?
Just to indicate, obviously, the, the cost for travel and accommodations and registration is about $1,200. Community Futures North Central Development will pick up 50% of that cost, so the cost of the city Thompson is just over $600.
Counselor Wong, did you have a question? Counselor Calata?
Is Counselor Byer back on the line?
Yes, she does.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask why, and Deputy Mayor Smoak has already pointed out that we haven't taken part in this in the past, and, and I wanted to ask the question, but I didn't want to ask it if Counselor Byer wasn't going to be able to answer. Why, when we're trying to cut our travel costs and trying to cut our costs, are we taking on a new venue? Because we haven't been active in this in the past. So, if Counselor Byer could, through the chair, comment on that?
I think I heard the question. I'm not hearing as good on my cell phone as I did the other phone, but I think I heard the question. And the question is, why, why would we choose to go, we're not asking, being asking participants, but as the city rep to Community Futures North Central Development, and under their, their guidelines and rules, they open this up to, up your board members, of which, of course, I am one as a city rep. And it's under their, the rules that they saw, we pay 50%, so that's why this is coming towards the city council. So, not just as a board member, I think it's important to have some attendance, but also as chair of the Development Review Committee. But the most important reason is the growing importance of economic development for the city of Thompson. So, being down there will be an opportunity to connect with some venues that way or some people that way, and to bring back hopefully some connections and networks of people's names and ideas for our economic development officers for Thompson 2020 and for Development Review.
Thank you. Counsel Wong?
I think, I don't see any value for Counselor Byer go to attend this event to, to bring back to Thompson, especially we try to cut, we cut our, we cut staff spending, and ourselves, we didn't even lead by example to cut our traveling. Even though it's $600-plus, I think it's still $600-plus, which is we can use that money to help out, for instance, relive a life, you know, things like that. So, I don't see a value, so I'd be voting against it, and I'd like the recorded vote, please.
Counsel Madichuk.
I also will be voting against this, and the reason why I see it is unnecessary travel. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe every committee that was supposed to hold a meeting last week was canceled due to lack of quorum. We've got to start keeping our people here and start attending what's expected of you right here locally.
Thank you. Counsel Valentino?
I think this is a clear indication that we are watching our dollars because we've formed a partnership, and we're having some of this funded by Community Futures North Central Development, and we're not incurring the cost 100%.
Thank you. Any other questions, Congress? Any recorded votes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Foley, are you on the line? No? Okay, opposed. It's carried in a recorded vote. Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counselor Calata, Counselor Madichuk, Counselor Wong. Now, we're moving into bylaws. We've deleted 9.1, 9.2, second reading of bylaw in 1966, 2018, Water and Wastewater Utility Bio-Mall Amendment. We have the bylaw and a memo from the city manager. Resolution 208101, be resolved, the bylaw in 1968, 2018, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend. The city of Thompson zoning bylaw number 1891. Am I reading the wrong one?
Yeah.
That's tabled. Sorry, that's the tabled one. Resolution 2018102, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the bylaw in 1966-2018, being an amendment of the bylaw number 1842-2010, of the city of Thompson, the province of Manitoba, to regulate and provide for the distribution and use of water and collection and treatment of wastewater in the city of Thompson be given second reading. We'll go to administration for support. Anything to add?
Just to indicate, obviously, that this is a housekeeping issue in order to sort of comply with the, the closing conditions of the transaction agreement of the water treatment plant from Vale to the city of Thompson.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak.
Open the conference.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's carried. Thank you. Next, we have the third reading of bylaw in 1966, 2018. Resolution 2018103, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the bylaw in 1966, 2018, be given third and final reading and do now pass. Administration, anything to add? We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak, anything to add?
No.
Call for the, or, counsel, any questions? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Third, oh, recorded vote for third reading, voting in favor, Counselor Madichuk, Counselor Wong, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Calata, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak, and Mayor Fenske. We're now going to the mayor's report. This is for the timeframe, March 27th to April 9th. Along with Deputy Mayor Smoak and Counselor Valentino, met with the bulk fuel providers on March 27th regarding increased costs due to the Omnitrox issues, along with acting city manager Jenny Krenson, deputy chief of... Along with acting city manager Jenny Krenz and deputy chief Pogon, met with Rick Orbidour and Brett O'Meara, and the city school liaison meeting took place as well on March 28th. The meeting with Rick Orbidour and Brett O'Meara was in regards to the sugary drink alliance. Met with the assistant deputy minister Dave Dyson in Winnipeg on March 29th regarding the mining reserve fund. Met with Minister Pedersen on April 3rd, and MLA Kelly Bindle, again in regards to the mining reserve fund. Met with deputy minister Jan Forster and assistant deputy minister Leslie McFarland, as well as Minister Cullen on April 5th regarding the UCN taxation issue and the Granton Lou and red tape issues. The final budget meeting was held on April 6th, along with city manager Gary Sepatelli and chief financial officer Jenny Krenz, met with Thompson Recycling Center Board on April 9th. The bi-weekly Thompson 2020 conference calls continue. The monthly water treatment plant meetings continue. Various committee meetings were held, development review, and there are no proclamations at this time. And I just want to go back to my opening statement regarding the tragedy in Humboldt and remind everyone that the GoFundMe website is open. If you Google GoFundMe Humboldt, it will take you to the site, and as I stated prior to the meeting, it has already raised $6.195 million. So, I would encourage everyone to contribute to the Humboldt GoFundMe site. With that, I'll go to the council for any committees or representation they made on behalf of the city of Thompson. Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Valent, or Deputy Mayor Smoak, Counselor Ellis, all those in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Bye.